Hi Dawn, it's Bill Pittman and Roberto.
Hi, Leslie, Jason, and Christie are on the line as well.
Okay. Hi Dawn, it's Bill Pittman and Roberto.
Hi, Leslie, Jason, and Christie are on the line as well. We're live.
Hi Matt Cady, I'm on.
Hi Matt.
Hi Dawn, it's Bill Pittman and Roberto.
Hi, Leslie, Jason, and Christie are on the line as well.
Can we make sure if anybody's watching YouTube while they're on the phone to turn it down or turn it off?
I just put mine on mute.
Yeah, I'm just on the phone.
Hello, this is Rita here.
Hello Rita, it's Matt.
Oh hey Matt, how's it going?
It appears that we have everyone on the line now. So we have all board members, Leslie Snell, Bill Pittman, and Roberto Santa Maria. I will call the Emergency Select Board Meeting to Order, 5:00 PM, March 18th. We have three official emergency business items. The first is a request for ratification of an emergency declaration in response to coronavirus COVID-19 global pandemic that I signed earlier today.
Do you need a motion to approve?
I do, please.
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve.
To approve the ratification.
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor, if we could do it by roll call?
Rita, aye. Christie, aye.
Matt, aye.
Jason.
Jason, aye.
Dawn, aye. And number two, we have a request for Select Board endorsement of an emergency order pursuant to state of emergency declaration for a temporary moratorium on all construction projects on Nantucket. And I just want to say, we are in incredibly uncharted territory right now. We are all dealing with this as it comes at all of us right now. And we are doing the best we can with the advisement of the hospital and the entire emergency management team, the state, the federal government, to figure out the best way is to stave off this threat and to keep our community safe. Hopefully, all of the action that we take now will be what saves us from this becoming much, much worse and hurts our economy, yes, very much in the short term, and hopefully saves it in the longer term. And I will open it to board comments. We will also have the ability for people to join in through YouTube if they want to make comments.
Dawn, I was just hoping you could clarify what job sites we can control and can't control? If this is outside work, inside work, all work? I think we were talking before and you said essentially anything with an open permit.
Leslie, do you want to weigh in on that, or Bill?
Yeah, this is Bill Pittman. The way town council adjusts it, it really applies to any construction or work on a facility. Now, our general enforcement power is against permits, but if somebody's working without a permit and they're doing construction work, they could be cited for that. But it really applies to all work in construction projects on the island, all kinds, including coworkers, non-emergency jobs such as sewer work, everything.
How do you define construction? Is excavation, or landscaping, or cleaning, are they all? How broad are you suggesting the closure?
Well landscaping is broad out, but that, I don't see where that actually applies in this case. I think that's a whole different scenario. There are people doing landscaping unless it's part of a permitted project, I suppose. It could be, but there's a lot of landscaping work that's going to start and has already started that this really doesn't apply to.
Although we would recommend that precautions are still taken.
Yes.
That's all we can do, really.
I mean, in this, the message that people need to understand is that you really need to stay away from each other. People riding together in vehicles that are then going home to multiple family members. It's a concern, the more we stay away from each other, the better we're all going to be. And this is going to ultimately save lives. And I know it sounds very dramatic, but what I'm seeing out there in other countries is very dramatic. And the hospital is 100% behind this and behind suggesting that people distance.
And this is Matt. No Dawn, I agree with your sentiment, I'm just trying to get clarity on how, you know, what does it exactly apply to? And how is it going to be enforced? You know, if a single guy is working by himself and putting up cabinets in a house with nobody in it, is that okay? Or, you know, how is this? Because those are all the questions that we're getting. And this thing was, you know, sort of known about 3 o'clock today. My phone blew up with questions like that. And I said, I can't answer them, we'll have a, you know, check on it tonight. And they'll explain what we're doing, why, and how it applied.
Hey Matt, in general, we never ever could craft such a moratorium that would address every single scenario with exceptions. It's very difficult, but in your example, in theory, yes, that would not be permitted under this moratorium. Because it's construction on an unoccupied house that is being permitted. Now, if, one of the things is if there's an occupied house, this is an exception. If there's an occupied house and work is being done to make the, continue to be, you know, occupiable, that is an exception. So if it's one guy replacing his kitchen while living in the house, that's not a problem. We'd probably never have known about it. But if it's contracted job where workers are coming in to do this job, that would be a prohibited act. And the enforcement mechanism would be through the building commissioner.
Gotcha. And so through the building commissioner, if anyone, Matt again, if anyone has any questions, that's where they go with them. If they want to do the right thing and they're not sure if they're doing it, who do they ask?
The building commissioner. Well, there's two, actually the declaration gives you two options. One is if it's a building project, it goes to the building commissioner. If it's a road project, it goes to the public works director.
Gotcha, okay.
And there's provisions in there for exceptions, as I mentioned. And there's also provisions in there for emergency work on the roads in case we have a sinkhole or something, or a water main failure. And there's provisions in there, if somebody has a project and it has to get going, as long as they can tie it into an effort for this recovery or this disaster, it could be allowed to go forward by either the public works director if it's a road project, or the building commissioner if it's a building project.
One question I'm getting is if any other towns have done this? And so far, the city of Boston and the town of Walpole. I think it's, whether it's a town or a city.
Hi, this is Jason.
Oh, sorry.
Hello Chief. I would like to respond to that question this way. We have a unique circumstance out here with the off-island workers coming in in such congested mode of transportation. Now, I know the High Line has announced, they're making provisions for social distancing abilities in their boats, but one of the things in their announcement said that all existing reservations won't be affected. And we all know that morning boat is sold out from now till whenever with those workers. So I'm not sure how they're going to do that. They didn't set a specific, but this would impact that. And even if they were able to cut back the number of workers in the morning, it's more likely just going to populate the steamship boats with more people to come over.
Yeah, Matt again, I'm happy to see the High Line, you know, making it possible for people to distance. I think that was a positive move on their part.
I'm in receipt of a letter from the Builders Association. When you all are ready, I'll read it, but Jason, go ahead with your comment.
Thank you, I got three questions. The first one is, I think what I'm hearing you say Chief is it has to be connected to a building permit? And that's why if someone's landscaping, say my house for maintenance, that doesn't include in this construction order, right?
Yeah, my understanding is landscaping services unless it was connected with a building permit or a project wouldn't be covered by this. Like, what I'm thinking is somebody, your yard person coming up and doing work to the house isn't covered.
Right, the only way we can enforce this is through what's permitted, right? Through the building department.
Essentially. Okay, in some respect, somebody's doing work and it's unpermitted, that's enforceable too. So, you know, it's possible, we may get calls about unpermitted projects we weren't aware of. But my guess is most of these are permitted projects. Most of them are professional contractors and most of them will do the right thing.
Okay, thank you. My second question is, I, sorry Dawn, I might be, I'm for this, I'm for the moratorium, I understand why. It, you know, kind of makes me a little nervous thinking of healthcare workers and caretakers and wastewater treatment facility staff and fire and police getting sick. There's a big outbreak, we're in big trouble. So I'm all, I'm willing to do my part and close the coffee shop. And so I'm for this moratorium. I just would, I think it makes sense for the public to have a timeframe on it. And I know this isn't a popular idea, but we did it for the schools, we did it for town offices, whether it's two or three weeks. And if we have to extend it, we can put language in there that says that this could be extended, so we're not giving people false hope. I just wanted to put that out there and see what everybody thinks.
I mean, I want it to be as short as possible. Sorry, go ahead.
I was just wondering too, I haven't heard, what did Boston do? Did they put a timeframe on it, or what timeframe did they put on it?
Bill Pittman, Quack did not put a timeframe, they just said it'll be reviewed. And I think the thing to remember about this is why are we doing it? It's to help flatten the surge. According to the hospital, all the information they've given us is this surge is, you know, days away, probably less than a week, that we can expect that. So it's very possible, it's very. I think it's probably more unlikely than likely, but it's very possible that we don't see that surge, next week we could be saying, okay, time to list this moratorium. So I would be more inclined, if you're going to put a time limit on it, that it be consistent with the school closings. That way, we're not sitting here spending all day long, every day, debating whether this should be continued or not. Because it really is a time consuming and it's a very, very, as you're going to find out, it's a very involved debate. And it wasn't taken lightly by this group.
I like that idea Chief.
I think so. Sorry, phone company. Sorry, Rita here, Jason. I was going to say, I like the idea of keeping it in with the school closings. I think, and just thinking about it from a trades point of view, I personally think up for review, whether it's two weeks for April 3rd or whatever that date is, that is going to be up for review. I think if we say, you know, it'll be, the moratorium is until April 3rd, I think people will start getting in motion again. And if for some reason it gets pushed back, then that's projects that, that's just an undoing again of momentum. So I think having a timeframe, but having it more for review, I think would be better.
Should we review at our meeting on April 1st?
Yeah, this is Christie, I was just going to kind of comment with what Rita was saying, that I think it's important to have a date, but also say that, you know, that's not final, we're going to keep reviewing this.
Yeah, Matt here, and I agree with that. I think it's important for messaging, I think we need to, you know, sort of, the more that we can, you know, more that we can message that, the concerns, the easier it's going to be, the more buy-in we're going to have, and the easier it's going to be. If people think, oh my God, this is three months and, you know, I'm going to lose my house and the world's going to end, and I don't, you know, and a lot of people are, and they're in that situation, I think the more that they can say, okay, you know, we're looking at this. I think the more we can message and answer some of those questions, the better, the better compliance we're going to have and the more successful we'll be.
Do you want me to read the, I have quite a lengthy letter from the Builders Association. Shall I read it aloud?
Yes, please.
Okay, are you ready? "To the Town of Nantucket Administration, The Nantucket Builders Association sincerely appreciates the severity of the situation we currently are in and thanks the town for its ongoing work and efforts to mitigate this crisis on all of our behalf. As we represent numerous tradespeople and their island families, we submit the following list of pressing questions, considerations, ideas, and concerns for your consideration as it relates to the possible closing of construction sites islandwide. In Nantucket's construction industry, onsite workers cannot take their work home. This means countless families will be without paychecks, and this in turn will ripple out to unpaid rents, bills, and families going hungry. A job site closure will have significant negative financial impact on the year-round population. How will the town assist these families? What programs are in place to assist trades workers financially over the duration of this period? In our predominantly residential construction industry, work occurs on private property, not in public spaces like restaurants, schools, banks, etc. This greatly reduces exposure risks and allows for safe distancing practices while at work. Can the town suggest alternative ways to allow local island residents in the trades to go to work while using social distancing protocols and other mitigative measures, such as requiring all contractors, trades, and onsite workers working indoors to wear respirators, wear gloves, and limit teamwork to one or two workers per task? Owners of construction companies could easily enforce this. The vast majority of the job sites on island are small to midsize residential projects. Instead of a complete shutdown, can't job sites be limited to having 10 or less people onsite at a time, as is consistent with current mandates on other public gatherings? Can the town limit off-island construction workers from coming to the island local job sites to work as a means of safeguarding the island's largest local year-round economic driver, the construction industry? If construction sites are to be shut down, would this action apply to outdoor construction such as foundation work, the framing of a residential shell, landscape construction, landscaping, etc.? Are business owners such as millwork, cabinet shops, paint shops, and the like allowed to perform their work? Is that up to the individual business owner? Is service work permitted, hot water heaters, HVAC equipment, etc.? Are emergency construction services permitted? I.e. flooded basements, leaking roofs or sidewall, imminent structural repairs? On that one, yes, emergency is permitted. Could contractors and trades be allowed to work in vacant homes to perform service work such as painting, plumbing, electrical repairs, boiler replacements, HVAC work, etc.? What happens to construction projects that are in process and could, will be damaged by shutting them down, such as water damage because of uninstalled windows or roofs not being completed? Whose liability would this damage be, the contractor, the town? Has the town spoken with the island's insurance companies regarding these kind of potential liability claims? Please consider the above as you make this very difficult and impactful determination. We understand that the model implemented by Mayor Marty Walsh appears attractive. However, the job sites in Boston contain a multitude more workers than even the biggest construction project on Nantucket. And more importantly, they are union jobs. Those tradesmen and women will be paid when they are home. Our workforce will not be so lucky. The Nantucket Builders Association would like to see the town take an approach of moderate restrictions aimed at keeping job sites open and to implement a maximum number of 10 people or less on a job site at a time, with such considerations. The industry and income will not grind to a complete halt, but will allow a mitigated path for the hard-working year-round trades work to continue earning a living so vital to our island economy. Respectfully, the Board of Directors."
Dawn?
Yep.
This is Bill Pittman.
Yep.
You know, you've sat in on the briefings from the Nantucket Cottage Hospital, and I think it's unfortunate that the Builders Association didn't have the same ability that we have and the information, it's almost information overload. But quite honestly, if they're not paying attention to what the hospital's telling them, their head is in the sand. Because a lot of these things they mentioned, why can't they continue? These are the exact things that we're trying to stop, are these one-on-one contacts in homes, in other people's homes and things like that. We've actually had examples here with our town employees who were potentially exposed to people that had been exposed to coronavirus on one-on-one contact in the trade setting. It's not going to, it would not be easy to police. I don't think any of us probably will be policing it too stringently, unless there's just egregious violations. But the bottom line is that these contractors really need to pay attention because the next five to eight days is going to be a make or break day for this island. People are either going to live or they're going to die, is the way it was told to us. And I think worrying about whether, you know, some of these things are a little bit self-serving. The other issue is there are state programs and federal programs that are coming online to help, especially people in the trades and people in the restaurant businesses in these various circumstances. Now, the worst thing we can do as a contractor is say, well, this may go away in five days, I'm going to keep my people on, keep them paid so that they can eat. Because they're going to deny them access to the benefits that the feds and the state are putting out there for these various circumstances. We should allow them the opportunity to get into those programs now while there's money and opportunity to do so. And we can get through this potential surge time. I wish the hospital was online to be able to brief you guys like they told us, but it is very scary.
I mean, taking measures like this, oh sorry Rita, go ahead.
I was just going to ask, they sort of had bullet point questions there, and I was wondering if part of our response, if Chief Pittman could, I think it would be Chief that would have the best answers for some of those questions, respond to each of those. I think there's some of the things that we discussed. And I would, you know, I would support Chief Pittman and everyone that's telling us that this does need to happen. I think everyone is hurting a bit here, but being precautious seems to be the only real choice we have, at least for the next couple of weeks.
Chief, do you have a copy of this letter from Greg?
I do not, but I'd be happy to respond to, in writing, probably tomorrow, to a lot of those answers that I can, some of them I just couldn't answer.
The other thing that Chief mentioned there are some of the resources, and I'm just wondering if those resources are something that we can put on our town webpage?
Yeah, I think that they're coming out daily. I wasn't able to watch the news, but I know there were more things coming out from the federal government this afternoon, in terms of financial relief to all Americans.
Yeah, I'll answer, I know a little bit, Matt again, I know a little bit from the restaurant side, people were saying, that was like, well, you can, here, you can get loans. And, you know, people getting loans, you know, piling more debt on while they're not making money and may not, you know, make anything this year or lose a lot, isn't very helpful, you know? I mean, whatever happens has to be actual cash in their money or people not having to pay their mortgages for a certain amount of time or tax credits to the businesses or something. If they're going to just, it has to be, it has to be meaningful to make a difference here. And nothing yet that I've seen is meaningful to the extent that people need.
Well Matt, I don't know about the loan program, but I do know that they've waived the minimum, I think it was one or two weeks for unemployment. You can get it instantly now in these cases. That's what I was referring to for the worker. Because they immediately qualify for unemployment insurance, and they've extended to beyond just unemployment, from losing your job. They've made it so that if you have to stay home from, you can't go to work because you have childcare issues, you would qualify. So those are the things that we're being made aware of daily. And we certainly, as soon as we have it, Janet Schulte has been delegated the responsibility to get all this together. And we're going to make it available to all of our residents on the island that may be affected.
Is Gary Shaw on the phone? Oh, hold on one second.
The unemployment chief is great, you know, for individuals getting it. It's not enough for, you know, for some people to pay all their bills, but it's something, which is a start. You know, I would hope that the government would freeze the rate increases on all the people who pay into that. Otherwise, all the small businesses that are getting whacked right now are just going to then see their unemployment increase. So unless they do something like that, you're hitting us, you're hitting some of the small businesses people twice. You know, and I'm sure that's all being discussed, we aren't going to solve that here tonight.
Is Gary Shaw on the phone?
I am.
Oh, hi Gary, we were hoping that you could make a statement from the hospital, or give input.
Sure, sure, I just dialed in and I'm not sure what's transpired so far, but I'm assuming you'd like an overview of the situation and the significance of this. So I'll start by saying that, you know, I've been in healthcare for quite a long time, over 40 years. And my background was, started as a Navy medic and then on to a Navy public health officer. I used to work in communicable disease control and public health around the world. And I've seen, you know, quite a bit of illness through different types of viruses that are working in the world and other types of things that are scourges, malaria and typhus and those pieces. But in all of my years of working, I've never seen anything that's so significant as this particular virus that's come out. And all that I read about it and learn about it as it evolves is that it's one of the most extreme things the world is facing and has faced in my lifetime. I've not seen anything like this. And, you know, understanding the significance of this virus and what it does or has the potential to do if it takes off and has a complete northern spike of case development. What we're doing and what I've heard the President say very eloquently, and the Governor, and quite frankly, the Board, is that we're all following the process and focus of flattening the curve of this developing so that we don't have it around for a long time and can get back to business. And the methods in public health are not sexy and are not popular. And yet, they save lives when you address things quickly and break the chain of the development of this virus. And we know that, to date, we don't have cases on the island. We know that we are testing for people that come to our drive-in area or to our emergency room. And if they meet CDC criteria, we are swabbing those individuals and sending those swabs to the state lab. We currently have eight this week that have gone to the lab. And we're not different than any other part of the country where you have traffic migrating back and forth. But we know that this virus is extremely transmittable. It basically is present in people several days before they know they are sick, and so they're shedding the virus and giving it to other people through handshakes and surfaces. So I've come to the Board or to the town to recommend measures that help us flatten this curve for a couple of reasons. One is that we know that if this takes off in a northern spike as it has in other countries, we run the risk of our elderly, and now we're finding that even some of our younger individuals are going to be impacted from it and potentially die. There is a case rate of death that's with this that's very concerning. But even that is that we are, we're a small hospital with a small staff with no intensive care unit. We have five ventilators, and two of those need to be on-site at any one time for surgeries. We're a very efficient surgical OB outpatient area. We have an emergency room very capable of handling patients coming in with an excellent group of physicians. But the spike, if it occurs, looking at the rate of infection that this disease causes, will, if spiked, will quickly overwhelm us to the point that we will not be able to take care of patients in that emergency room, and we would be forced to try to find helicopters to get the most impacted off the island. And that's what we're trying to prevent, a caseload that goes way beyond any capacity for the hospital to handle. Now, the numbers, I'm always asking, you know, what do those numbers look like? And I'm going to throw numbers out that aren't qualified from the standpoint of an epidemiologist, but they're good examples. You know, if you were to have, you've got an island population of 17,000 people, and if you had a case rate and a hypothetical case rate of 10%, let's say. And the reason I say hypothetical is those case rates are varying by country and by age and demographics. And as we get more of this known across the world, those rates will be established, and we can plug them into any model. Let's just take 10% of 17,000 people, that's 1,700 people. The statistics right now point towards 20% of that 1,700 needing hospitalization or some support of some type. Of course, those numbers vary significantly from country to country. That puts us somewhere north of 300 individuals, maybe closer to 350 that would need some sort of supportive care in a hospital. Well, I have 14 beds. And then when you look at of the 1,700, the numbers that we keep hearing that cause mortality or death or need to have some sort of ventilation to prevent that, they're somewhere around 5%. And so now that's somewhere north of 80. If we had this full spike of people needing ventilators and, well, guys, we have three that we can use to keep the rest of the hospital open with two for emergency surgeries and whatnot. So if we have that kind of thing happening, the hospital cannot keep up, and you would not have a healthcare system in this, on this island that could support what's needed. So the goal is to flatten it, flatten it by 20, 30, 40, 50% to get those numbers down so that over time, with a really flat bell curve, you know, we have many fewer cases that come to the emergency room that would require ventilation. And then we in our support system through partners and Mass General could support the long-term focus of taking care of the community instead of being overwhelmed. So the measures that we support, which are the town's measures, they're not popular, and we understand how devastating they can and probably will be to businesses without intervention at the federal, state, or local level. But my goal here is to do the greatest good for the greatest number. That's an old public health scenario focus, and keep the health of this hospital focused on right now the staff's safety and the community's safety. So with that, and through support of our local public health department, you know, we've recommended that very, very focused measures be taken on having people stay at home, having people not congregate, and all of the social measures that separate us at six feet. I have never, ever faced a disease like this in my professional lifetime, and I hope I never do again. Thanks, Don.
Thank you, Gary. I think that we should open up the YouTube for people to be able to comment in at this stage and let the Board take in any public comments.
I think the 17,000 is an undercount. A ton of people have come to the island in the past, you know, seven days, five days, and I think that, you know, we're probably at 25,000 or 30,000 based on the number of loaves of bread I'm selling.
Those aren't the numbers that we've seen from the airline, from the airport and the boats, but there have been some people coming, certainly.
I'll tell you, I could just, it's anecdotal, but this weekend we were doing, you know, it was like, it was like almost June, and everybody that came into the shop was from Connecticut and New York and, you know, and they're here, and a lot of them are, there's a lot, some left, but more are coming. I've heard of houses being rent for a month or month and a half from people, to people out of the country. You know, we have people heading this way now, you know, and I'm wondering if this hospital has taken that into consideration.
That was raised by the hospital, yes.
Very good.
As a concern that we have an increased population for this time of year.
Yeah, it's not 17.
I have a couple of, should I read the comments aloud or?
Yeah, I think you should read them. And just so that people know, we just didn't have a chance to get to this at the very beginning of the meeting, but this is the second time we've done a remote meeting like this. It is brand new to us.
I can't hear Libby.
Every town is facing this situation.
They can't hear you. Well, we're separated, so she's on the opposite side of the room, but let me just re-say it. Essentially, this is only the second time that we have tried meeting this way, so we're definitely have a big learning curve at the moment. We're just starting to try and understand how to do it properly. I've got the phone next to me. I don't know if you guys are watching me on YouTube. So I'll read off the comments as they come in, but we've just got to get used to our new normal of meeting in an empty room. Arlene O'Reilly has sent in two comments. Workers coming over on the boats need to stop. If all businesses on Nantucket have to stop to keep each other safe, the only people who should be on the boats are residents and necessary supplies. We've definitely heard these comments about the boats. And then tradespeople living on the island should be allowed to work on the current projects for repairs and urgent care only. Urgent situations are addressed in the way that this is drafted. Those are the only two comments so far. So if Board members want to keep discussing, oh, more coming. Hold on. Mary Longacre, please ask NCH Gary Shaw to repeat confirm his statement on the number of people tested for COVID-19 and what he expects in terms of positive results. Gary, do you want to respond to that?
I'd be happy to, Libby.
Oh, it's Don.
To date, we've, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yep, it's okay. It's Don talking to you, but go ahead.
All right, Don, all right.
That's okay.
So I haven't checked at the end of today, but as of midday, we had eight that met criteria for screening for testing to go to a state lab. And what was the other part of that question?
Um, hold on.
Oh, and how many positives do I expect?
And what he expects in terms of positive results. You said you thought that there were two that were more concerning than the others?
I would say that the physician and the team that take those are concerned about all of them becoming positive, although in early testing last week, we did have, we had one test last week that came back negative, which was fantastic. So I would only say that if a test is submitted, it's done with high suspicion for COVID-19, and we wait to see if in fact it is. Sometimes it can be influenza, but, you know, those things are, they're viruses, so we wait to see what the positives turn out to be.
Thank you. I have more comments coming in, and I'm sorry if I do not pronounce people's names correctly. Utah Atu, and the comment is, I really hope that the Highline and Steamship get pressured to take stronger preventative measures. As a local, I feel honestly very worried with the greed the boats seem to be expressing. They have been starting to take greater measures to limit. Shonda Bart...
And Don?
Yep.
Don, for people that are listening, the town has asked them to do that as well. I think that's important for people online to understand that the town has asked the boat, the Highline, the Steamship to follow, you know, the CDC distancing at least, and, you know, and we've made that clear to the Governor, to the elected representatives, that we have a very concern here.
And the Highline...
I think it's really important that people know how hard you guys are working on this.
The Highline sent out a release earlier today that they are going to limit their occupancy, and the Steamship, in terms of passengers, has not been anywhere close to occupancy. They can take 800 passengers, and they have been at a maximum of 130, but generally way less than that. And people can also remain in their cars, which is helpful on the Steamship, but I do think that they will be limiting their snack bar service to help further. Shonda Bartlett, with so many residents losing their jobs, now all the tradespeople losing their jobs. That is definitely a concern in what we're talking about here. Case plane, is the hospital taking any steps to order more ventilators, and are there any plans to create a tent hospital for overflow? Gary, could you respond to those two questions?
Sure, I'm happy to. Yes, if we were able to find ventilators on the market, you know, we would consider that. We are looking, but you also have to understand that you have to have the staff trained to run those, and we don't have the staff trained to run more than that number. We can, if we were to receive them, try to ramp up, and then it becomes a question of how many beds do you have where you can actually have that kind of patient, since we don't have an intensive care unit. So we're looking into it. We don't have answers yet. I will tell you that all hospitals in the United States are trying to increase their capacity where they do have ICUs, and those ventilators have become precious assets. During a call with the Minnesota Hospitals Association, day before yesterday, we talked about tents or things available for hospitals if they were to be able to set those up and have them staffed. National Guard was one request for a MASH-type hospital, and they're assessing that question. I don't have an answer to that. But we've also, you know, looked at options of, can you increase bed capacity somehow outside, and that's still being worked on because you still have to have staff to staff it. And we have a very small staff that's capable of working with these types of patients, and those staffs on agency levels are now being asked to work in multiple places in the United States. So we are trying, we're assessing. We are working through our HIX Secure Program, which connects us to other hospitals, and the NIMs program, which connects us to the state for resources. But we're working it to make sure that we can get what we feel we can take care of and do well.
Thank you. The next question is from Shonda Bartlett. What is the SB doing to get more food for the food pantry? The pantry will not be able to keep up with this need. Definitely understand that. I do want to try to keep the current conversation focused on the building moratorium, if we can.
There's just a lot of information on the...
And there's a lot of information on the town website, a lot of FAQs, and a lot of many people working on this as quickly as they can. Lisa Getter, this is a matter of life and death for some people. This should not even be an issue, exclamation point. We need to stop construction for the sake of our community. Case plane, how, this is another hospital question. How many didn't meet the criteria and have been turned away in terms of the screening? Gary?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Do you know how many people came to get checked and didn't meet the criteria for testing?
We are tracking that number, but I didn't bring it with me for this meeting.
Lydia Polka, at any point do we think we will be put in a forced quarantine? I don't think that we know that. That would come down probably from a higher government level, and it's one of the things we're trying to avoid with taking these kind of measures now and flattening the curve. Nick Johnson, how many of the eight were island residents? I don't know if that data's available.
I don't, I don't know that information, and we wouldn't release that under privacy rules.
Okay.
And it's hard, and that's hard to define.
Utah Atu, how can we emphasize the seriousness of social distancing? I think that's one of the things we're trying to get at here.
We're doing it right now.
And yes, Libby and I are far apart. Kate Marlini, can we please also consider limiting flights that are bringing global non-resident citizens to our island?
Yes, outside of our control, it's addressed on the website.
That is addressed on the website. It's outside of our control.
Don, can I just ask a question about the moratorium?
Yes.
I'm just wondering if someone has found in violation of the moratorium, what sort of penalties there are?
I believe it's addressed in here in terms of a potential stop work order could be issued and fines.
Okay. So that's all within, that's laid out in the moratorium?
That's the very end. Any person who violates will be subject to issuance of immediate stop work.
Re- this is Bill Pittman. I don't know the exact, oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Chief.
Chief, go ahead.
Okay, I don't know the exact number, but I, it would be, like I said, a stop work order or whatever the fine for a building code violation would be for that particular scenario.
Okay. So people, just if people wanted to find that information somewhere, the Building Commission will probably have that information at some point.
Ask Leslie.
Ask Leslie? Leslie's on. Wait.
So we don't have, this is Leslie Snell, we don't have the ability to find for building code violations. We certainly issue stop work orders. We would need to make sure that a stop work order under the building code would apply to this, but we could certainly issue other, you can just, type enforcement similar to the HDC and other agencies that do that.
I think that...
I think that's more of a legal, a legal question that needs to be clarified.
I think a lot of this is that we hope that the message will get out there for, that people will voluntarily comply with this and understand the severity of the situation. It's not to create a whole new level of having to police the island and penalize people. It's a...
No, I...
We need, we need to stop this, and people need to stay home to be able to do it.
Do we have information, just because this might apply to some of the people that are on job sites, do we have information on policies for people who are uninsured, underinsured, or maybe don't have full... underinsured, or maybe don't have full legal immigration status, and how we'll deal with them if they feel like they need to get tested?
There's a whole lot of resources on the town website. It's probably in there somewhere.
Yeah, Libby's saying that that should be available on the town website. There are a lot of different resources for that, coming from all different government levels, to make sure that everyone has the access to healthcare.
Okay. I think, and I don't know whose responsibility it would be, but I think it would be valuable for, to make sure the Builders Association has that information, and that it's in English and Spanish.
There's a lot more that's coming in. Do you guys want me to keep reading? Nicole Gross, "Could there be, there be an exemption for tradespeople to work solo on unoccupied job sites? Zero risk of contamination, but keeps an option for an income stream open?"
My own question, response to that is, I think that some of that is reasonable, but I also think just talking to some people from, from the building suppliers, that I don't know what Marine Home Center Island Lumber will do, but I know some of the employees are a bit concerned about being at work and being exposed all the time, so I think there's other people in the equation beyond the solo worker. I think if they have the materials, but I don't know, you know, we don't know what Island Lumber, Marine will do.
I mean, I would also mention that if one person goes in and works, and then the next person goes in and works, if there's not proper sanitation happening in between, the virus stays alive.
Yeah.
I mean, with just our meetings in here, everything is being sanitized between anyone sitting at this desk and the next person, which is a very limited, I think it's limited to about 10 people total that are coming into this area. I just, this, I think that this is just not something that we've ever dealt with, which I think Gary said quite, quite well. Gwen Kamatis, "What about trash collection?" I'm not sure if that, that's meant for job site trash collection, or over the, across the board trash collection. Trash collection is open. Alyssa Corey, "Is there an email address of the Building Commissioner that can be provided to address specific situations?" His email is on the town website. Uta Atu, "Thank you, town, for hearing us in this trying time." Keegan Bartlett, "Are there any plans for a shelter-in-place mandate? Does the town have that ability?"
No plans. Well, ask Pittman, but no plans, and the Board of Health may, but we'd need to know from Roberto.
We have no current plans for that. I think that this is what we're trying to stop, but do Chief or Roberto want to respond to that?
Yeah. Rita, it's Bill Pittman. We certainly have the ability to issue a request to shelter in place. To require people to quarantine, which is essentially what that is, in Massachusetts requires a court order, and that's a quite an extensive process, because it involves collaboration between the Board of Health and the, or the Commissioner of DPH. So our, my understanding, our ability in that area would strictly be an advisory situation. Such an order would most likely come out of the governor's office, if that was deemed necessary.
Okay, next, Gilbert-
Dawn, along those lines-
Mm-hmm. Go ahead.
About the shelter-in-place. I had one, I've had one of the, you know, one of the larger suppliers of some of these, you know, some of the contracting materials, say that he thinks what we're talking about is a Band-Aid, and we should be considering a shelter-in-place. So someone who has a lot of, you know, economic interest for this, the building to continue, is looking at this from the same standpoint that the chief is talking about, saying that this may not even go far enough-
Yep.
-because of what we're facing.
I mean, I would encourage people to watch some of the videos from Italy, from Italian citizens, saying what they felt like about a week ago, and what they feel like now, and how they wish they had done things differently. It's, it's quite eye-opening. Gilbert Martel, "We need to work." Three exclamation points. Totally get that sentiment. Megan Boys, "What about private planes?" There are some private planes that have come in. The data we have seen is not, not a lot of them, but I don't know if there have been more in today. Haley McKinnon, "What's worse, hundreds, potentially thousands of deaths, or a few weeks of construction workers accepting compensation from the government while they're out of work?" Gilbert Martel, "Trash, trash will continue." What? Sorry.
Can I say one thing on that?
Yeah.
This is Jason. Most, most workers are 1099.
Yeah, I know.
They're not going to be able to take unemployment. That's not an option for them. I just want to make sure the public does understand that unemployment's not an option for most construction workers.
Some of the bigger companies have employees, but a lot of people are subcontractors, and that's a big part of our structure here, which, like has been said, is not in Boston. Most of those are union jobs, so there is an economic difference.
We might have to try to stick to the directly related comments, because there are-
Yeah, I know, the comments are, I really need these comments coming in to be very focused on what we're talking about. There are many questions that are addressed on the town website, or, I mean, you're welcome to email me.
Maybe just, just read the questions, not the comments.
Okay.
Up to you, but otherwise, we're going to be-
Frank Daly, "If job sites are going to be shut down, that will leave projects stopped at arbitrary points. What ability will it become when jobs are damaged?" I mean, I think that on a case-by-case basis, some things may need to, need an extension to be secured. Am I, am I correct in saying that, that that will be up to the Building Commissioner?
Or his staff.
Or his staff, that there might be certain provisions to properly secure buildings?
Dawn, this is Bill Pittman. I didn't hear the question, I'm sorry.
I think that, I think the concern, and this was in the Builders Association letter, is if job sites are shut down, say with like a roof half-done, and there could be significant water damage, that kind of thing, where there, will there be the ability to figure out having like a small group of people go in and finish that part of the project? And I, I would hope that we would have a provision, that that would be up to the plus department to evaluate those on a case-by-case basis. But, but again, I mean, before we end up in complete shelter-in-place and everything's just left, we've got to stay away from each other and, and figure out how to secure these things in very small, small groups of people.
That's right, and I think, I think the fact that this doesn't take effect till Friday after evening, you know, this gives them two days to start making these provisions. That's oftentimes as much notice as we get when there's a major nor'easter heading this way. So I think that the contractors should take advantage in the next two days and, and get these sites secured. Then if they have a problem beyond that, they certainly have the avenue to talk to the Building Commissioner about it.
I'm getting a lot of comments. I'm just, I'm going to have to try and filter through these a little bit.
Dawn, can I make a suggestion?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Could we try to keep this to the building moratorium, and then try to schedule another one of these that's kind of covering everything with, you know, Chief Pittman, or Roberto, and a couple others? I don't know if that would help. I think this is helpful. We have 700 people watching, and a lot of people commenting, but we're not going to get to everything tonight. I don't know if everybody has time to do this again, Friday, or Monday, or Tuesday.
Maybe-
I think that's a good suggestion. This is Christie. I would do it sooner rather than later. I think the community has a lot of questions out there.
Roberto is doing a three times a week answering of questions thing on-
Can you say that into the mic? Oh, except they can't hear you.
He's doing a three times a week, Roberto, San Antonio Health Director, three times a week show, sponsored by the hospital, with answers to lots of questions. I have, this is popping into my head right now, but maybe there could be a forum with, and they've already done this once, he and President of the hospital could maybe do a thing like this, where it's taped and comments come in that they can answer, questions that they can answer. Comments aren't particularly helpful, quite frankly, but specific questions that could be answered by those two. Maybe they, maybe they do a forum every couple of days, or something like that. I need to talk to them about that, but that might help some of this, because some of these questions that are coming in are, like you've said, they're on the website already, they've been answered already, and some of them are not answerable by the town.
So Libby was just suggesting of maybe having a forum to answer questions with Roberto, and potentially Gary, if he's available, Gary Shaw from the hospital, and, you know, to really get out people's questions. A lot of the answers are on the town website, but are you, Jason, are you, and Christie, are you suggesting that we put off this decision?
No, not at all. Sorry, this is Jason. I just, I start, I'm reading the comments, and I'm seeing it getting really, really broad, and they're really important questions, but I think we only, we want to keep it specific to the building moratorium, and I just want to know if we could schedule something like this again. I think it's really important and beneficial, seeing 700 people watch.
Right, that was, that was my thing, is can we talk more about the building? I know a lot of the questions coming in are, can we address some of the Building Association's questions before we vote? And kind of going to, I know we had said maybe Chief Pittman could answer some of those questions tomorrow, but I think those questions need to be answered tonight.
Okay. How do we want to get out this? Are you still there?
I'm here.
What, what was the question again? You want me to repeat, Dawn?
Yes.
This is Christie. I was just saying that we read the letter from the Builders Association, but maybe going kind of line by line to their concerns, and if we could have questions, or answers to their questions.
Yeah, I was going to put something together in writing tomorrow, when I have the chance to look at it and compare, and go into the relevant data that we have. Just doing it on the fly, I'm not sure that's a good idea.
I'm okay with going forward with the vote, and even in reading some more comments, I was just looking at, the comments are so broad and important, that we need to do this again in another, another venue in a broader term.
I think we could arrange that, to continue to take in questions.
I'm getting from NCTV that they could, they could have a live forum like this, with people who can answer the questions immediately. So, I mean, if people want to make comments, that's fine, but again, the comments wouldn't be read, the questions would be read, questions that have a specific answer to them, not rhetorical questions that do not have an answer. But a forum like this, where people can, can log in on YouTube and, and put in their questions, and somebody, you know, could ask them of the health director, and the hospital president, and whoever, whatever other officials, or other individuals that are involved in this, trying to deal with it in our community, could present.
I don't know where the board is on this. I know we absolutely need to, to answer everyone's questions on protocol. The biggest protocol here is that we, we have to stay away from each other, and we're just trying to get at every way to, to encourage that, and I guess mandate the things that are within our control. But I think that we have to act now, or it's going to really be completely futile, if it's, if it's not somewhat futile already. I think that we could, we do have a board meeting scheduled for next week. We could make alterations, amendments, revisit this decision, but giving people notice now to secure things by the end of the work week on Friday afternoon, I think would be fairly wise timing.
It's not, I agree, Dawn, I, I support this now, I agree, but I think that we should, you know, and just because something isn't quote-unquote "under our jurisdiction," doesn't mean we can't ask. You know, we can't, you know, we probably, for example, we can't tell real estate agents not to rent homes to people who are coming out here, but we can ask them all not to do that for this period of time. That's one example. And I, I just think that there's, you know, we have more power, you know, the administration of asking for things we need, you know, even if we don't quote-unquote have the ability to 100% stop it. You know, so I think we should be thinking about all those. I support this, because of the severity of it, and, you know, and I think, like, one suggestion is that we have pamphlets or something at all, at all the, you know, at the construction, for the construction field, Marine Home Center, and Island Lumber in places, you know, starting tomorrow morning. I would hope that everyone is notified that walks, walks in those places.
Well, I'm not, I mean, just one comment is, I'm not sure that it's wise for us to be printing things and delivering them around to a bunch of different places. I think we're going to need to get this word out electronically and verbally.
Yeah, well, however it's done, I think everyone walks in-
I want to limit people leaving their house.
Are those places going to remain open?
As of right now, they can, under the governor's orders.
We don't have authority to shut them down.
We don't have the ability to shut down retail establishments.
All right. We, could we ask them not, you know, to only sell supplies for, for jobs that are, you know, that meet these criteria? Or could we, I don't know, I mean, I just-
I mean, we can make, we can make requests. I know that like, companies like Amazon have already shifted to high-demand items at the moment to limit their staffing, and, and I know that staff members at these retail establishments are concerned. I mean, that's another part of the population that will help protect by not having the same demand for supplies. And I mean, I think a lot of places are going to, you know, call in your order and will bring it out to you, type of behavior. I'm getting a lot of comments on here saying, "Just vote at this point."
Yeah, I'm definitely ready to vote. I think we've got to make a decision and just keep the information coming to people, as we already are, but, and I understand there's a lot of questions, but again, I think the seriousness of this demands significant action.
I'm going to read the full act here that's being proposed, for the record. Just bear with me. An act relative to the postponement, oh, whoops, I'm sorry, wrong one. Emergency Order Number One: Temporary Moratorium on All Construction Projects on Nantucket. In consideration of the state of emergency declared in the town of Nantucket upon the recommendation of emergency management and public health officials, and the need to protect the health of the inhabitants of the town of Nantucket, the following order shall be implemented until such time as the state of emergency has been lifted. Now, we may in our motion choose to put a date certain on this, that could be amended at a later time. Effective Friday, March 20, 2020, the town is suspending all regular activity at construction sites on Nantucket, including but not limited to all work authorized by building permits and street opening permits. Upon issuance of this order, all active construction sites shall be secured to prevent unauthorized entry, damage to equipment, and/or work in progress, and to protect public safety. Operators shall employ the necessary crews and labor to complete the work necessary to secure their sites by 5:00 PM on Friday, March 20, 2020. After that time, only skeleton crews shall be permitted to enter construction sites for the remainder of the moratorium, and such entries shall be limited to what is necessary to ensure safety and security. The only work that will be permitted after March 20, 2020 will- The only work that will be permitted after March 20th, 2020 will be emergency work, which will need to be approved by the Town of Nantucket Planning and Land Use Services Department. For purposes of this order, emergency work includes only the minimum work necessary to prevent damage to persons or property and to ensure the habitability of existing residential structures until such time as this order is lifted, including the following. Emergency utility work, road or building work, such as to repair water leaks and sinkholes, new utility connections to occupied buildings where prior connections are no longer functioning, mandated building or utility work to protect public health and safety, work at healthcare facilities, shelters, including temporary shelters and other facilities that support vulnerable populations or that provide emergency services, work which ensures the reliability of the transportation network, other work necessary to render occupied residential Billy, buildings fully habitable. In addition to the list of emergency construction projects, the town will, on a case-by-case basis, review requests for exceptions to the temporary construction moratorium. These will be granted by the building commissioner for building-related work or the public works director for street-related work. These will be granted only if they support increased public health and safety. This order is effective Friday, March 20th and will be reviewed at regular intervals by the town's incident management team and public health officials. New projects cannot be started at this time and no new permits will be issued unless they meet the criteria above. Any currently permitted and/or active construction project slash work must be in a secure situation by 5:00 PM on Friday, March 20th, 2020. Any person who violates this order will be subject to issuance of an immediate stop-work order and an assessment of the maximum penalty authorized by law. This is so ordered by the Nantucket Select Board in concurrence with the town manager, direct office of energy, director, Office of Energy Management, or Emergency Management, Director, Department of Public Health, Nantucket Building Commissioner.
I'll make that as a motion.
Is there a second?
I can't second it unless it has the suggested time limit that aligns with the school.
Matt, how do you feel about making the end date April 6th?
That's fine. That's a friendly amendment.
And we can change it. Is, then, then do you second it, Jason?
Yes, I'll second that. Thank you.
I'm going to take.
Can I just add that that would be, oh, sorry, just one point of discussion that, you know, making it clear that it's up for review.
I would like to suggest that we put this on our weekly agendas. We will be meeting in, I think, the same configuration that we're doing today, as long as none of, Libby and I are not sick. And, and we'll be meeting every, we will be meeting every Wednesday, generally for agenda items that are absolutely pressing. And I think that the, this should be on each agenda.
I agree. This is Christie, and I think one of the biggest concerns is how do we stop the flow to the island? We have three cases in Barnstable and I think this moratorium will stop the workers from coming to the island, but I, I know the town is working really hard, but looking at other islands across the US who are able to kind of shut down, how do we kind, how do we start looking at that and seeing how we can reach out to the governor and get that implemented sooner rather than later? It's really hard to hurt the entire construction industry when it sounds like we're trying to prevent people from coming here.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? By roll call?
Rita, aye.
Jason, aye.
Christie, aye.
Don, aye. That's a unanimous vote. This is not taken lightly. We understand that basically every large industry on the island is extremely damaged right now. And, you know, we're, this impacts all of us.
This is Christie. You know, being with the chamber and talking to small businesses non-stop for the past three days, you know, I know there's a lot of resources coming from the state and, you know, from federal relief programs. I do think on top of everything else, the town needs to start talking about some relief programs. A lot of the trade industries, like we've been hearing tonight, don't have unemployment insurance and other opportunities that might be coming down the line. So I don't know if that means looking at how we allocate different tax or do we give tax breaks to businesses, but this is something that's really going to impact businesses for a long time.
We, we are, just so people understand, the emergency management group is meeting daily and we are doing everything we can to get a handle on this and to figure out how to best offer support to the community and keep everyone safe. This is, you know, absolute top priority and above anything else. We do have one more item on our agenda. Affirmation of vote of Select Board to file special legislation in connection with rescheduling the April 14th annual town election. I completely think that we absolutely have to reschedule the election. I would like to see it happen after town meeting, which remains to be seen when that will happen. And I believe that the advice we got from council is that it does not have to be postponed to a date certain. We can just postpone it. We did float a couple of dates in June, but I, I think it would be better to leave it open if that's available to us. And there will be emergency budgeting legislation coming in case we don't have our election prior, or don't have our town meeting prior to July 1st. Libby, am I correct?
Yeah, I moved to, I moved to accept this to, but not put a date on it.
I'll second.
By roll call, please?
Quick question?
Oh, yes.
And maybe it doesn't have to be answered right now, but a couple organizations were asking about CPC funding that they had been anticipating, that they would have anticipated earlier in the year. So I, maybe we just let people know what happens with that if the town meeting is moved back.
Well, as of right now, we're hoping to have the town meeting prior to July 1st and then the CPC funding would be available on July 1st. So we, we might have to get further clarification on that as, as we know.
Okay.
Can we take a vote on the postponement of the election by roll call?
Rita, aye. Christie, aye.
Jason, aye.
Thank you. Don, aye. That's, that's also a unanimous vote. So if anyone, does anyone have any further comments?
Yeah, Don, I just wanted to thank all the staff. I know every department head and town administration has been working Saturday, Sunday at night and, and doing nothing else. And so I just, I've tried to like to not email you all, and I know, Don, you've been in a lot of these meetings for three, four hours a day trying to keep up on everything. I just wanted to thank everybody that's doing the best that they can.
Thanks for saying that.
No, I, I agree. And I, and I think it's important, if people are still online, it's important that they understand that, that the, that you guys are doing as much as you can and looking at everything, so.
Can we immediately get the, all of these things posted online? The order, the declaration?
Yes.
And I did have some, before we adjourn, maybe Chief, you, you could weigh in on this. People have been asking, what is the significance of, of the emergency declaration? How will that help us?
Don, it's Bill Pittman. The emergency declaration is, for all practical purposes, the federal and the state declaration accomplished what we really need to have done. Where this local declaration comes in handy is it does two things. One is it emphasizes the seriousness of the situation that we are confronting and it also makes available an easier process for help from FEMA and MEMA for recover, during the recovery phase of this in terms of funding, availability and other resources. Plus, it puts you, when you're asking for resources, the state authorities look at their requests statewide and those communities with declared states of emergency get their attention a little faster than others.
And I would, I would just end that, that this doesn't cover everything, but we really all need to stay home and, and, and shelter in place as much, as much as we all can. This is supposed to be a message of the severity. Now, our two biggest industries on the island have, have been severely impacted. I hope that we don't see six people in landscape trucks riding around together tomorrow, in the, after Friday, kind of thing. I mean, the sooner the better. People need to social distance and not, and just really understand how bad this is. And the more we do now, the better off we're going to be. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I would just say, yeah, thank you, Don, for that reminder, and I would second.
All those in favor by roll call?
Jason, aye.
Christie, aye.
Matt, aye.
Don, aye. Thank, thank you all very much. Tough, tough decisions here.
Thank you, everyone.
Good job doing, good job, Don.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.